For one of our young residents here in the county, but she'll be with us shortly. With that, we're very blessed this morning to have Mr. Ramjad Tafik from the Islamic Center of West Cobb to give us the invocation, followed by Officer Doi Ott of the Cobb Police Department, lead us in the pleasurable leadings. Officer Ott.
It says on my script. That's what it says.
God Almighty, guide us among those whom you have guided right and preserve us among those you have preserved. Take us for friends among those whom you have befriended. Bless us in that which you have bestowed upon us. Guard us from the evil that you have allowed, for it is you ordained and none can ordain anything against you. God Almighty, we come to you asking to bless our world with peace. Help us to find peace, truth, and well-being in the world. Peace and security between nations, tribes, and races. Peace and sincerity in our hearts and minds. For God Almighty, lead us from death to life, from falsehood to truth, from despair to hope, from fear to trust, from hate to love, from war to peace, and let peace fill our hearts, our worlds, and our souls, and our humanity. Amen.
The United States of America, and two bodies for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, and just. Thank you, Mom. Thank you very much again. Did they misspell your name? It says Doi, but...
That's right.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because there's nothing more important than someone's name here, and I just want to make sure they got the name spelled right here. I got a look over here from somebody like, maybe they missed all the names. The odd part we got right.
We never heard his first name.
And next year, we'll do your middle name. Thanks for being here again this morning, Officer, as always. Okay, well, we have a lot of moving parts today, so John, I'll turn it forward to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we begin, I just want to recognize that our new director for community development is here, Jessica Gwynn. Just want to welcome her, and if she needs anything, just let me know. Okay, today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When each case is called, the applicant is requested to stand and signify that they are in attendance. Then we're going to call for any opposition to signify that they are here also, so they can be counted for the official record. After the counting of the opposition, the applicant in any opposition will be asked to come forward, to be sworn in so they can present testimony to the Board of Commissioners. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case of concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time, so convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on a case, you might want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more people to come back to the front for questions or comments. After that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the case at hand. There is one case on today's printed agenda, Mr. Chairman, Board, in which the applicant is asked the case to be withdrawn without prejudice. That's other business case 22 of 2019, KFH Development LLC. The applicant is present, Mr. Chairman and Board, and they do want to withdraw this without prejudice.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gamble and I talked about this last night, because she knew she wasn't going to be here, so make a motion to allow OB22 to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda, which have been continued by the staff of the Planning Commission, and they will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z37 of 2018 Winchester Parkway LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May 7, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z37 of 2018 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z70 of 2018, the Wasserman Group LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May 21, 2019 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Z70 of 2018 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z71 of 2018, Pope and Land Enterprises Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the May 7, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z71 of 2018 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z77 of 2018, Acworth Baker Grove LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May 7, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z77 of 2018 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z82 of 2018, Igbo Union Atlanta. This case was continued, or excuse me, this case was held by the Planning Commission until the June 4, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z82 of 2018 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z9 of 2019, Blake Properties Incorporated. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the May 7, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z9 of 2019 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z11 of 2019, Family Life Restoration Center Incorporated. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the May 7, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z11 of 2019 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z12 of 2019, Fatima Goodman, Codges 401K Trust. This case was continued by the staff until the June 18, 2019 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Z12 of 2019 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z13 of 2019, Amber Shea LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May 7, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z13 of 2019 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z20 of 2019, Ashley Carmen. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the May 7, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z20 of 2019 will not be heard today. LUP number 8 of 2019, Pad Mesh Cacapate. That case was continued by the staff until the May 21, 2019 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so LUP 8 of 2019 will not be heard today. LUP 9 of 2019, Anna Thomas Hughes. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the May 7, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so LUP 9 of 2019 will not be heard today. SLEP 4 of 2019, A1 Auto Coors LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May 7, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so SLEP 4 of 2019 will not be heard today. And finally, other business number 16 of 2019, Duncan Land Investments. This case was continued by the staff until the May 21, 2019 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so other business number 16 will not be heard today. I would like to ask people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn your phone off with the volume. The ringing does interfere with the broadcast and presentations. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If within two years immediately preceding the filing of a resoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 or more was made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this requirement is located on the table at the back of the room. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, and any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted to this board after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for April 16, 2019. Resounding case Z80 of 2018, Embry Development Company LLC. Request rezoning from GC and PSC to RM8 for the purpose of townhomes and landlots 35 and 36 of the 18th District and landlot 1297 of the 19th District. The property is located on the northwest side of Old Bankhead Highway, the south side of Veterans Memorial Highway, and on the east side of Old Powder Springs Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval to the RM8 zoning district subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on March 27, 2019. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore received by the zoning division on March 27, 2019. All garages to be used primarily for the parking of vehicles, with only incidental storage that does not interfere with the parking of vehicles. The 15-foot landscape buffer as shown on the site plan for the purpose of visual screening. A 20-foot landscape enhancement strip not shown on the site plan along the frontage of Old Bankhead Highway behind buildings 9, 10, and 11. The purpose of the strip is for beautification of Old Bankhead Highway and visual screening of the buildings. And staff comments or recommendations not otherwise in conflict. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z80 of 2018? Mr. Chairman, we have one person opposed.
Okay, I'll have to put it on, go to Mr. Cupid.
Yes, I'd like to encourage the applicant to speak to the party that's here to see if we can address them.
Is that Mrs. Spraberry?
Yes.
School board.
Sorry?
It's the school board.
Oh, okay, we won't, yes, this is the school board.
Okay. All right, so we'll go and put it on regular.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's on regular. Okay. Resounding case Z8 of 2019, Carl Streck. Request a rezoning from RA4 to R20 for the purpose of a single-family house in landlot 904 of the 16th District. The property is located at the southern terminus on Michael Way, south of Providence Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval to the R20 zoning district subject to the following conditions. Final site plan and elevations to be reviewed and approved by the district commissioner. No construction or grading shall be permitted on the portion of the property identified as tract number two on the boundary exhibit for Michael Way dated March 29, 2019. No building permit to be issued until the issue of transfer of ownership or the creation of an easement through the property identified as tract number two is resolved. This will be handled at plan review. Allow a reduction of the required road frontage from 75 feet to 50 feet. No construction parking of equipment or material loading, unloading on Michael Way. Construction and land development work to be limited to the following hours, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturday, 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. No work on Sundays or holidays. The district commissioner may approve minor modifications to approved zoning, except for those that increase the density, cause a reduction in the size or composition of an improved buffer, relocate a structure closer to the property line, increase the height of a building, change an access location to a different roadway. Change that is in conflict with or contradiction to the Cobb County Code of Ordnance or zoning ordinance. Require a variance waiving applicable regulation of the Cobb County zoning ordinance. Fire department comments or recommendations not otherwise in conflict, including review of equipment turnaround. Stormwater management division comments or recommendations not otherwise in conflict. Department of Transportation comments or recommendations not otherwise in conflict. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z8 of 2019? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resounding case Z22 of 2019, Iglesia Panacostal Unida Hispana Central. Request rezoning from GC to NRC for the purpose of a church and related functions in landlot 556 of the 19th District. The property is located at the northeast intersection of Austell Road and Dorothy Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan dated March 25, 2019. No automotive-related uses on the property. Front of the building to be renovated. Renovation is to adhere to the Austell Road design guidelines as close as reasonably possible. District commissioner to approve the elevations for front of the building. Landscape and lighting requirements to meet the Austell Road design guidelines. The landscape buffer along the rear property line to be a minimum of 20 feet, except the buffer may be reduced to allow paving as shown on the site plan. The paving behind the building shall be removed. Applicant to install a foot-tall, heavy-duty privacy fence along the rear property line. The fence should not allow light to pass through the fence. The purpose of the fence is to provide visual and sound screening. The fence is to be maintained by the applicant. District commissioner to approve the fencing. Applicant to landscape along Dorothy Road frontage. All access to Dorothy Road to be removed. County Arbors and district commissioner to approve the landscape plan. Maximum capacity of the church to be 108 people. The district commissioner may approve minor modifications, except for those that increase the overall building square footage, cause a reduction in size of an improved buffer, increase the height of a building, change an access location to a different roadway. Change that which is in conflict with and express stipulation or condition of zoning requires a variance that violates the Cobb County ordinance. No certificate of occupancy to be issued until the demolition of the house is complete, the parking is installed, and all stipulations are met. The house to be demolished within 120 days of the Board of Commissioners' approval. And staff comments or recommendations not otherwise in conflict. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z22 of 2019? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resounding case Z23 of 2019, North Church Lane Properties 1 LLC. Request rezoning from HI to HI with stipulations for the purpose of addition of retail use to the property in landlots 899 and 900 of the 17th District. The property is located on the northeastern side of Olympic Industrial Drive and the southerly side of South Atlanta Road and the southwest side of Olympic Industrial Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval, to HI, subject to the following conditions. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated March 27, 2019. Staff comments or recommendations not otherwise in conflict, specifically the fire department comments requiring a new certificate of occupancy for the mercantile use. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z23 of 2019? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. LUP 7, Shiloh Hills Christian School. Request a land use permit for the purpose of educational programs for 3- and 4-year-olds, which is a renewal, in landlots 210 and 211 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Hawkins Store Road, on the north side of I-575, east of Bills Ferry Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on December 17, 2018. And Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 7?
John, one second.
(inaudible)
We just had a small admin correction. It was the right description of the zoning, but it had the wrong title, so we want to make sure you get the right title on here for those that are at home watching this, and also for you here. Okay, I think we're back on track.
Okay.
That's for 24 months, correct?
Yeah, 24 months. And let the record show there's no one opposed to that case. LUP number 10, 10W Crouch and Virginia Crouch. Request a land use permit for the purpose of furnished apartment for congregation volunteers in a single-family house in landlot 332 of the 19th District. The property is located on the southwest corner of Criminal Drive and Criminal Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Staff comments or recommendations, specifically the fire department comments requiring this home to be in compliance with the Life Safety Code, Chapter 26. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 10? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into other business cases on the consent agenda. Other business item number 13 of 2019 is to consider a site plan and stipulation amendment for Cascade Property Group regarding rezoning case Z29 of 1990. The property is located at the northern terminus of Timberland Club Drive, north of Mount Wilkerson Parkway, in landlots 883 and 911 of the 17th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Allowance of replaced units to use new pads or foundations. No increase in units over the previously approved 459 units. Stormwater management approval at site plan review. And all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business number 13? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other business item number 17 of 2019 is to consider a reduction of minimum public road frontage from 58 feet per other business number 69 of 2018 to 57.21 feet for lot 2 for Preston D. Morris and Catherine R. Morris, for property located at the western terminus of Plaza Drive in landlot 359 and 382 of the 19th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the minimum public road frontage to be 57.21 feet. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 17? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other business item number 18 of 2019 is to consider a site plan amendment for material handling systems regarding rezoning case Z23 of 2014 for property located on the west side of Fairview Street and on the north side of Gresham Road in landlot 1137 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Proposed site plan received March 11, 2019, with district commissioner approval of minor modifications and Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 18? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. There was a little bit of confusion as to whose district this was in, so I didn't get this request till yesterday. And in the DOT comments, number three reads, "Fairview Road is a substandard street. Recommend the developer improve Fairview Road from along the frontage to the intersection with Gresham Road to comply with Cobb County standards." And I'd like to add to that, at such time that the property on the corner of Fairview Road is developed. And I just want to make sure DOT is agreeable to that as well, to adding that to their comments. Okay.
And she is shaking her head, she is a rebel to it.
So, just add that when it's developed.
Okay.
For Fairview Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Other business item number 20 of 2019 is to consider a site plan and stipulation amendment for Ashton Atlanta Residential LLC regarding rezoning case Z70 of 2016. The property is located on the north side of Mitchell Road, south of Castile Road, in landlot 693 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on March 12, 2019. Drainage easement shown on lot 3 to be extended across adjacent lot 4. And all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 20? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Yeah, can I just ask one question on OB20? Since Normandy puts in a structure across the line, is that going to require OB on their part, that structure itself, or not? I'm just curious.
No, this item takes care of that.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure. My information. Okay, good, we're good. All right, so I understand we have a couple requests for some additions to consent. Commissioner Burrow?
For other business number 19, Kroger Fuel, Mr. Sam is here.
I'll go read it first.
You need to ask if there's anybody.
Okay, let me read it in first, and we'll get to your motion. Other business item number 19 of 2019 is to consider a site plan and stipulation amendment for the Kroger Company regarding rezoning case Z23 of 2011. The property is located on the northwest side of Sandy Plains Road, the southeast side of Schalfer Road, and on the eastern side of Gordy Parkway in landlots 385, 36, and 47 of the 16th District. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 19? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Okay.
Okay, does any member of the board have any questions about that? It's pretty straightforward, I think. Okay, I think you're good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thought I did an excellent presentation.
John, do you want me to read the additional steps that we've all agreed on?
You can stay until you do the stipulations.
Okay. First of all, I apologize. We weren't able to meet until Friday of last week, which is after the deadline for submission, but Kroger is looking at some options to shift the underground tanks so that the flow of traffic will not be impeded there. So that's why the final site plan will come back to me for approval once we see those changes. We also have concurrence from East Cobb Civic Association for the following stipulations to be read. Number one in Mr. Sam's letter dated April 10 is not applicable, so we will be adding to number two, the district commissioner to approve final site plan and final architecture. Number five, the fuel center shall consist of a maximum number of nine MPDs, and the bathroom and the kiosk is for employees only. Number nine, we are striking number nine. Kroger will have signage on the shopping center sign and Kroger name. Kroger will have signage on the shopping center sign, and Kroger name on the gas and gas prices on the canopy. Number ten, add landscaping to be approved by the county arborist and district commissioner. And we're including, number fourteen, we will include the dispenser queuing sketch that was received April tenth and attached, and I will give these to the clerk as well. Number seventeen, no banners or balloons, with the exception of the grand opening. Number eighteen, no alcohol, beer, or wine sales in the kiosk. Number nineteen, if Kroger ever terminates the lease or vacates the property, the fuel center is to be removed, with parking spaces reinstalled, with the site to be remediated. And then all other steps remain in effect, not otherwise in conflict. And for a clerk's note, I'd like to add that Kroger will consider, and has agreed to considering a donation towards the left-turn signal at Gordy and Schallford.
One other thing, Commissioner, the original twenty-eleven rezoning included a stipulation that the kiosk would only have automotive-related type of merchandise, and we thought, and we'd like to do chips, crackers, and soda, and, you know, the usual things like that, so.
Right.
I wasn't sure what the genesis of that was, and perhaps your beer and wine prohibition takes that into consideration, but just wanted to make sure we could supply potato chips.
Yes. I'm just adding no beer and wine.
Yes, ma'am.
To that.
Thank you.
Or alcohol.
So are these crackers and chips to be in the shape of cars?
We can, we can try that, Chairman. It's gonna be a prototype.
Okay.
So we're good? All right. So we have all the notes, everything, we're all set?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to?
Motion to approve, subject to the, and to add it to consent.
We have a second. Any discussion? I'm sorry, Commissioner Cupid? Right, right. Well, I'll call the question.
Did you have something, gentlemen?
You're good, you're good. You were here, five to nothing, passes five to nothing.
Are you trying to say something, John?
All right, Mr. Sam, we're good.
Commissioner Burrow, thank you. And Mr. Chairman and Board, it's my understanding that there's one more case that could possibly be added to consent in Commissioner Burrow's district, so I'll read that in next. Other Business Item Number Twenty-three of twenty nineteen is to consider a stipulation amendment for A and E investments regarding rezoning case Z twenty-nine of twenty eighteen. The property is located on the south side of Jamison Road, west of Canton Road, in land lot sixty, and land lots sixty, sixty-one, and eighty-four of the sixteenth district. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number Twenty-three? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Okay. Other Business Number Twenty-three. Mr. Nay, first of all, we'd like to offer our condolences to you and your family. God bless you, and we'll keep you in our prayers. We have had several discussions on this, and Ms. Carol Brown is here, representing the Canton Road neighbors, and I'm gonna read the additional steps that we've all agreed to into the record, and ask that this be moved to consent. Number one, additional uses. Number one, no auto body or paint shops. Number two, auto broker sales office for online sales only, with no cars to be kept on-site, and no physical transactions on-site. Number three, we're agreeable to deleting stipulation number three, related to limited to this owner and use only. Number four, additional permitted uses include neighborhood retail sales, neighborhood retail uses, emission or inspection stations, jewelry repair, clock or watch repair, retail jewelry store, eating and drinking establishments, car washes, convenience food stores, churches or other places of worship, temporary uses. Number five, any other acceptable uses in N R C only are subject to final approval by the District Commissioner, with notification to Canton Road neighbors prior to approval. And all other steps. Number six, all other steps remain in effect, not otherwise in conflict. And the applicant's agreeable?
We are indeed.
Okay. So I make a motion to move this to consent as well.
Second, any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero. And Mr., I want to make sure I get this spell correctly, Mr. Yakubova?
Yes, sir.
Is that, you got that correctly?
Yes.
I have to say that I spent an hour on your, on your paperwork Sunday. So you, you have, you're worth every penny today. Just want you to know that you bring the most interesting cases to the board, and I appreciate that.
I try to make the best of it. All of us.
It's always a pleasure to have you here, sir. And Mr. Nay, again, the condolences of the board, but you have the most interesting client there, Mr. Yakubova. All right, with that, now I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as revised.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question, passes five to zero. Okay, John?
Thank you. Hey, all those folks that weren't consent, you're free to go. First case, rezoning case Z eighty of twenty eighteen, Embry Development Company LLC, request rezoning from G C and P S C to R M A for the purpose of townhouses, in land lots thirty-five and thirty-six of the eighteenth district, and land lot twelve-ninety-seven of the nineteenth district. The property is located on the northwest side of Old Bankhead Highway, south of Veterans Memorial Highway, and on the east side of Old Powder Springs Road. The applicant is present. Earlier, there's one person here opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward, be sworn in.
Good morning. Good, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Kevin Moore here on behalf of the property owner and applicant in this application for rezoning. Embry Development is the applicant. This is just over twelve acres, as you can see on your screen. It's located, located almost at the intersection of Veterans Memorial and Old Bankhead Highway, but this property does actually really front and orient towards Old Bankhead Highway, as you can see on your screen. It's also primarily zoned general commercial. It's general commercial category that is within a community activity center, so it's a general commercial zoning category that can be utilized under your zoning ordinance. As you might know, general commercial was the predominant intense commercial zoning category in Cobb County from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen ninety-six, and has a fairly extensive and exhaustive list of intense commercial uses that are available, as that predominant category would suggest. What we are proposing, and what Embry Development is proposing, though, is a townhome development to be rezoned to the R M A category. Why townhomes here? If you can see where that property is located, the main corridor by far, the arterial road by far, is Veterans Memorial, where you have orientation of commercial uses, of new commercial uses, to the extent there are newer commercial uses, but primarily older commercial uses that have been along Veterans Memorial for many years. This stretch of Old Bankhead is actually a local road, it's not even an arterial, in which commercial uses, at least the type that you would want to see being brought into this area to help to continue the improvements that have occurred, just simply would not be available. It is off the beaten path in terms of access to it, in terms of how it's located, and in terms of its visibility. But what we are proposing is a townhome development of ninety townhomes. You'll notice this plan, this proposal, has been continued for several months. It was continued a couple of times with the planning commission as we worked through several issues. Number one, we also worked with the Maybleton Improvement Coalition to receive their support. As we moved through this process, we not only took their input and worked with it, but we took their input and incorporated the input of Maybleton Improvement Coalition into this plan that you see before you. We took the input from community and area residents that had provided that, incorporated that into this plan that you see before you. That's why it was on the consent agenda, because we had addressed all of the opposition concerns. And I think one of the things that was, that came out of this was an overall level of excitement. This particular area where this intersection occurs at Old Bankhead and Veterans Memorial has not seen new development, both from a commercial standpoint or a residential standpoint in many years. By proposing a new quality townhome development, you're able to inject a type of redevelopment, a type of homeownership and owner-occupied homes into the area that is needed to support newer commercial, newer retail, and newer redevelopment overall, which is what actually your specific policy guidelines call for from a planning standpoint in this particular area, is to inject owner-occupied homes and redevelopment into this area, and exactly what this does. I'm gonna turn to the site plan, just to kind of highlight a couple of important points. Turning now to the site plan itself, see this is Old Bankhead. You can kind of see at the top, along here is Highway seventy-eight or Veterans Memorial. The commercial that is existing is oriented towards Veterans Memorial. This townhome development, though, would be oriented in access off of Old Bankhead Highway. Couple of important points that were made as far as site design and working with this site plan and overall development with the community, and that was to ensure that these streets are, in fact, public streets, and they meet public street Cobb DOT standards. In addition, we have provided for appropriate parking that is distributed throughout the community, and importantly also, we have very good opportunities and have included within our plans amenity areas for community gathering spaces that include open lawns, areas for pavilions and fire pits and so forth, where all of this area can then be enjoyed by the residents as a community gathering area at this end of the property. In addition, some of the stipulations that you heard provided for landscape, extensive landscaping along Old Bankhead, as well as landscape buffers incorporated into this proposal and development and site plan. In addition, our stipulation letter, which is dated March twenty-seventh, incorporated all stipulations and conditions that had been proposed and identified as critical issues by Maybleton Improvement Coalition, as well as other area residents that took part in community meetings, to arrive at this stipulation letter, and incorporates all of those items as well. In addition, it incorporated specific building elevations and home elevations for these townhomes, which are, which are very much an improvement on the available housing options in terms of their quality and aesthetics, and those are included as part of that stipulation letter. And again, that was an item that we worked very hard with the community on, and the Embry Development worked very hard with the community on, to make sure those concerns were met. I do understand this morning that the sole opposition is the Cobb County School District and their representative, which they're free to do. I would note that their concern with overcapacity, which is noted in the staff comments, deals with Pebblebrook High School, I'll also note that it's the Cobb County School District's responsibility to build their schools, to handle capacity and the projected capacities of our student populations, which they continue to do and should continue to work on. But this is a good project, and it fits actually the specific guidelines and policy guidelines as a general concept for this area, and it's needed. Bad commercial is not needed here. What's needed is quality residential, and that's what we're proposing with this plan, and that's why I've worked so hard with the area residents, the community at large, and the Maybleton Improvement Coalition to get to this point. With that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Mr. Mike Embry of Embry Development also can answer any questions, and he is here. And we certainly respectfully request your approval of this rezoning application, consistent with the planning commission's unanimous approval as well. Thank you.
I think you're good, Kevin, thank you. And I believe, Mr. Sprab, yes, please.
Good morning, I'm Charles Spraberry with the Cobb County School District Commissioner, Chairman Boyce, and Board of Commissioners, I appreciate your time. Approval of this petition will cause concern for the Cobb County School District, as a result, and an impact enrollment on schools already overcapacity, including Maybton Elementary and Pebblebrook High School. Thank you for your time.
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Okay, my notes indicate that the two of the school, the, the, Maybton Elementary School is overcapacity by sixty-one, and Garrett is under by a hundred and eighteen.
Yes, sir.
Okay. My only question is on Pebblebrook, seven hundred, you're over by seven hundred? Is that, is that an accurate number?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'm just curious as to how, that seems like a pretty large number. It'd be, be one thing to be one or two hundred over, but seven hundred?
It is one of our magnet schools with a Cobb County performing arts magnet, so it does attract a lot of extra students as well. We are, we do have a project currently in design to actually go to Pebblebrook High School and add additional classroom space, so that is something we're looking for. As I said, it is in design right now.
Do you have any idea how big, how much that design would accommodate? I don't want to put you on the spot and have you say a number you don't know, but.
I will tell you this, that we are increasing the classroom space. We took initial design, thought that would cover it. We're relooking at that, so we're gonna have more classroom space than we originally anticipated, so.
And if that came to fruition, when do you expect that would be built out?
Is it in design now, so we're probably talking two years out.
Two years out. For it to be open and everything?
Yes.
With additional capacity? Okay, all right, I appreciate your time this morning.
No problem.
Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you, Chairman. I agree with the comments shared by the applicant that this is a strong development for this area, which has not seen good quality development, whether it be commercial or residential, in a long period of time. The last time that we've zoned something here was the Barnes property, which took place last year, and that is west of Bankhead, but other than those two, it's, it's been rare. And this is an aged part of our district, and it has a lot of challenges, and I am actually pleased to see the consideration of opportunity here and for the investment that's coming. For the school board member, I know this is not the first zoning case where we've had school board come in and oppose zoning due to capacity, and I know you're indeed the messenger, but it would be good to have a robust conversation about how we move forward offline, because this is very difficult for us to address. The chairman did ask some questions, which I think did help to shed light on the expansion of Pebblebrook, but certainly want to be partners. You know, as our schools go, the community goes, as the community goes, the schools go. So that would just be something I would take back, that I would love to sit down and see how we could better partner to how this moves forward. But with that, I move that we approve Z eighty. I'm gonna thank the applicant for his diligence in working with the community. This applicant has been before since December of last year, and there's been a lot of negotiation back and forth, and I appreciate us being able to get to the point where the community residents are not here in opposition. So again, I ask that we, I move that we approve Z eighty, subject to staff comments and recommendations.
We have a second? I just have a couple of questions. The letter from the Maybton Improvement Coalition, one of their stipulations or comments was, is that detention pond be paid for by the county, by the HO, by the county, so the HOA. Is that still in effect? Just curious as to why the county should pick up the cost of the detention pond?
We can get someone from Stormwater here typically.
Yeah, I just.
They maintain. Thank you.
Dave Braden, Stormwater Management Division. As a planted condo or townhome development, the Stormwater Management and the pond will be maintained by the HOA, so that, I mean, the construction of it will be by the developer.
Right.
Maintenance will be by the HOA.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I just want to make sure that we have our, we have our money challenges that ought to be added to that.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Appreciate that. And since this is a enterprise, within enterprise zone, does this development qualify for those incentives, or not, by nature or the kind of development? Or not by nature of the kind of development? Oh, that's just for commercial? Okay, all right. I'm just curious. Whatever we can do to help out people, I think we should try, but if that doesn't apply, it doesn't apply. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Call a question?
I have a question.
Oops, sorry.
My question is, there were stipulations placed on it at the PC hearing. Will those carry forward in this motion as well?
Yes, we're approving the, we're approving the subject to PC recommendations. Yes, they have comments.
Get that in the notes? All right, with that, I'll call a question.
Thank you.
Passes five to zero. Okay, thank you.
Okay. SLUP 13, 2018, Kennesaw Jewish Center Incorporated, request a special envious permit for the purpose of a student center for students of the Jewish faith attending Kennesaw State University, Land Lots 94 and 97 of the 20th District. The property is located on the east side of Fry Lake Road, northwest of Campus Loop Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLUP 13? The record show we have four people. Five people opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
If you want to, you can just add what was transpired from the last meeting when we held it to work out what we were trying, you were trying to work out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Kevin Moore here on behalf of the KSU Jewish Student Center in this application. Last month, the board held this for 30 days for us to continue and pursue additional opportunities with meeting with the Kennesaw State University regarding access onto Campus Loop Road. If you can see on the screen right now, you'll see there's Campus Loop Road along the bottom. This property is almost at the intersection of Fry Lake Road and Campus Loop. You'll see, if you look to the right of Campus Loop, you'll see that is Campus Loop. It is KSU's campus. You can see the buildings and the cars and so forth. If you recall, this issue primarily was one of support from the Pine Tree area, Pine Tree Civic Association, and with our proposal for a Jewish student center to access onto Campus Loop Road. There's broad support for that, but that support quickly goes away if access is on to Fry Lake Road, which is where this property actually has public road frontage due to site distance and safety concerns as to access. We did pursue meetings with KSU. Those occurred. It wasn't until Friday afternoon that we received a written answer from KSU in terms of a memo from their traffic engineer in which they have declined to our offer to access Campus Loop Road. That section of Campus Loop, as you may recall, is private. It's actually owned by the university. It's not a public road in that location. There were several reasons why they, why they had given that. We, however, respectfully disagree with those reasons and would like to continue to pursue our discussions with them and try to get really down in the weeds with them on access here and what can be overcome and how we might deal with that. Due to the broad support the community has for access on the Campus Loop Road, it just makes sense. And we've worked hand in glove with these residents, with Pine Tree residents, to get to this point. And this is not a time sensitive issue for my client, but it's an important overall issue for my client moving forward. And so we'd like to continue to work. I think putting this up when we don't have a, what I would call a successful answer on how this could be accessed and do so that can address the concerns that have been raised thus far. We believe that if this could be held for 60 days, bless you, that would allow us that time to come up with an appropriate answer to that question. It's just, it takes a while. When you meet with KSU, you sit and twiddle your thumbs until they get back to you. And that's what's happened here. They just did get back to us on Friday afternoon. So we'd appreciate that time. This is, as I said, this is an important issue for the particular student community that we are representing and to their parents and to their loved ones. And it's an important issue, we think, overall, that can address several issues. So that's where we are with it. And we'd hope you'd support that effort. Thank you.
Okay, and now we have to hear from the other side.
Mike Lavender, I'm president of the Pine Tree Civic Association, and we've been dealing with this issue for a while. We initially met with the rabbi. Walked property looked like a good project. We weren't, we had really no objections to it. We thought it might be an improvement to the whole area. But there's quite a few issues with the moving the entrance to the property. I mean, as you say, the entrance that is recommended on the current site plan, which is exiting the property onto Campus Loop, is almost right at the corner, the bottom right corner of the property. The road there is straight, flat and easily visible from both directions. If you look to the left of the property there is where the driveway is. You'll notice that that is in a curve. It's on a hill. There's a lot of parking that goes along there. And it's just not a very good entrance. And if you look down right below that, there's another road that intersects right here. Now, I'm talking about up just a little bit, right there. There's another entrance onto Fry Lake Road. So there's tremendous amount of obstacles or opportunities for accidents and those kind of things. And, you know, we haven't had, and I'm going to go back to my notes here a little bit because I don't want to miss anything. But the, the site plan that's on the website was submitted on March 28th. I went back through all of the site plan schedule through June of 2018. And there's been no site plan review scheduled on this particular project by the county. You're requesting a variance from a residential to basically a commercial property. And if you move the entrance to Fry Lake Road, you're basically opening up the door to more commercial property in a residential area. So while we don't have any objections to the student center being on that piece of property, if it's basically a KSU visible site, if you move that over into the neighborhood, then you're going to, you just open up that whole area for more commercial development, which was a big, big issue with us. And again, you know, we talked about the site distance issue. And based on the Cobb DOT's recommendations, the view to the left going down toward Campus Loop is actually less than 200 feet, which is almost a third less than the county requires. So you not only have to have a stipulation, you know, you'd have to have a rezoning, so to speak, of the property. You'd also have to have a variance for Cobb DOT safety requirements. And I think that pretty much covers my, covers my issues. Except, well, I did, I did take a write-up last night. And one of the items in the letter that was presented by KSU and the, and Croy to Commissioner Burrell, said that the lighting on Campus Loop Road was not as, not as good as the lighting on Fry Lake Road. And I have pictures looking both up Campus Loop Road from the intersection and back in a little bit. And the lighting there is far superior to what we have on Fry Lake Road. When you look to the left down Campus Loop Road from the intersection, you can, you have virtually no, no vision. And I can show the pictures if you'd like.
Well, I think that the issues on traffic safety, you did well documented from last time. All right. Plus, it gives the reason for the continuance is it gives also the board a chance to look at the letter from KSU. We haven't had a chance to see that.
Right.
So I think that unless there's been some other major changes from your presentation last month, the board understands your concerns.
Right.
And in my world, asking for a little bit extra time to see if there is, if there is a plausible middle ground seems like a reasonable approach.
Right. And we have no objections to that delay in looking at this.
Okay.
And having a site plan developed that takes into consideration the water retention, the access via Campus Loop Road from, you know, approval from Kennesaw State. I would say we probably wouldn't have any objections. And I'm not sure if we need to carry on any more conversation about it.
Well, the 60 days signals that they want a reasonable discourse.
Right.
And not turn into a crisis by asking for 30 days. So I think that this pause may, may or may not help. We'll see.
Okay.
So I appreciate the fact that you support the continuance. That helps Commissioner Burrell significantly in her, I'm sure what her motion will be. So, but I appreciate you coming to time and also for all the work that you did, you know, bringing to attention to board your concerns of the drafts. Thank you very much. And again, I would appreciate it unless it's all brand new evidence.
I'm just going to make one point.
Okay.
Local Commissioners and Mr. Chairman. We had a presentation, but basically it gives you physical pictures of what this would require. If the road was, if the cut for the driveway was put on the Fry Lake Road, not only would this be a major safety issue, but it would change the character of the neighborhood. When we originally approved of this with the stip letter, there was an entire layer of trees protecting the neighborhood from this. On the second site plan that was submitted, they moved the building and put the parking lot right along where the residents are. What doesn't show in this diagram is the fact that there are houses all along that are covered by the trees. Because of the elevation, right across from that driveway, you would have people on their second story bedrooms looking directly at this facility. You'd open it up to basically the nine homes that are along the leg of Campus Loop Road exposed to that. In addition to that, in the second site plan, there is a retention pond. The only place that retention pond can go is in the lower level of the property, which this doesn't show the elevations. That retention pond would have to be in the left-hand bottom corner. Not only would that be right along the sidewalk, but it would also be, you would not have the ability of shielding it with trees because it would be a problem for the sign of, sight of light, excuse me, line of sight restrictions. In addition to that, you would have neighbors looking into a detention pond. So we are very strongly opposed to any solution that puts this entrance onto Fry Lake Road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Commissioner Burrell?
Thank you both for your comments. This has been going on a while, but it's not ready to be approved or denied at this point. I do want to submit for the record, the site plan with, which shows the entrance on Campus Loop that the applicant and his attorney requested, that goes with the letter from KSU and the engineering letter from Croy. And that, that will be online for you to review as well. The issue here, and I'll probably be calling DOT up, Amy or Ashley. Campus Loop Road is a private road owned by the university. We're at their mercy. And they have given us a negative answer to our request on Campus Loop. But we're still working on that, or the attorney for the applicant is still working on that with some issues that they've addressed to hopefully get an agreeable solution. Fry Lake Road is our last resort, but it is a county road. And we actually can't deny access on a county road, but we can require that it meets site distance, and it doesn't. So Mr. Moore and his client are going to have to go back to the drawing board with where it could be located on Fry Lake that does meet site distance. And they still have to get easement for site distance on Campus Loop from the university to put the entrance on Fry Lake. I've had a lot of opposition to this for it being on Fry Lake, and rightfully so. Pine Tree Country Club, it's a cut through now, and it goes through neighborhoods. And it is an issue. It is a traffic issue and a safety issue. But I'm willing to hold this one more time for 60 days to try and get all this in a situation that we can all agree to that meets the standards and the safety and site distance requirements. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we hold this for 60 days until our June zoning meeting.
One second. Any discussion?
I'm sorry? June 18th?
Okay. Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Okay, rezoning case Z-5 of 2019, Summerlin Homes, request rezoning from R-15 and G-C to R-15 O-C for the purpose of a single family subdivision in Land Lots 1247 and 1248 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Holloman Road, south of Hyrum Lithia Springs Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-5? Let the record show there's two people opposed. Is there anyone here in support of rezoning case Z-5? Raise your hands. Let the record show that there's three people here in support. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning, Mr. Sams.
Good morning, Ms. Chairman. Good to see you again. For the record, my name is Garvis Sams of the law firm of Sams, Lark and Huff and Bally, and I represent Summerlin Homes concerning this application for rezoning. Pleased to be here and thank you for listening. This is a case that's been recommended for approval by your staff and your, and your planning commission. The property itself has interesting history. You may have seen a little bit about it yesterday in the Marietta Daily Journal, not so much about the zoning, but about the historical aspects of it. As you can see, it's near regularly shaped 33-plus acre tract of land located on the west side of Holloman Road, south of Hyrum Lithia Springs Road. This is the location of the former Sun Valley Beach Water Park. The current owner of this is Cumberland Christian Academy, whom I represented in 2014. At that time, the church intended to move their corporate offices to this property and also consolidate the entirety of its school operations and athletic fields. They were able to find a substitute location. It is satisfactory for them. So they purchased, they closed on the property, but they didn't execute in terms of actually having what they originally planned for this. So it is a preponderance of its zone, general commercial. There's some pockets of other zonings, but it's surrounded by VLDR property, even though it's within a Parks Recreation use under the future land use map. And from a policy perspective, and I know you're policy driven, with VLDR being the target market that I think staff and you as a board are looking at, we felt like we needed a proposal that comported with what that policy was that surrounds it because it's run its course as a Parks and Recreation designated area. This is Summerlin's rev... This is Summerland's revised proposal. We're showing 56 single-family detached homes at a density that's below the density cap of VLDR. We're at 1.9 units per acre. When we started looking at this, we pro forma it to 62 homes. By the time we filed after discussions with staff and others, we reduced that to 59 homes. It was heard and hailed by the planning commission. In the interim of that, we reduced it from 59 homes to 56 homes. So that is what I'm pitching. That's our proposal today. The revised proposal, of course, comes with, let's say, I say negotiations. There's two property owners that are distinctly involved. There's the larger tract on the eastern side of the property that's not a part of ours that you can see, owned by Mr. Chandler Vreeland. We originally agreed to an eight-foot, excuse me, a six-foot fence he would like to have, and we're willing to do as the planning commission recommended, an eight-foot wooden opaque decorative fence that surrounds his property with him having input into the style and the kind and how decorative it is. But a two-sided decorative fence for Mr. Vreeland. Also, we're speaking with Mr. Green. He's on the very bottom. That's the southern, the extreme southeastern part of the property. Mr. Green owns a home there, has owned it for some time. Similarly, we agreed to a six-foot fence, but he would also like an eight-foot fence. He would like a chain link as opposed to the wooden decorative fence, a chain link fence with slats in it, of his choosing, of his liking, of his kind. Now, this is not part of the stipulations, but he and I spoke just a few minutes ago. If you look at his property, maybe someone can get a pointer, the very extreme southeastern side of the property is his lot. If you can see in front of that, there's floodplain that surrounds that. We have no intention of utilizing that for the construction of homes or streets or infrastructure. And I can say as a matter of record that we'll agree there'll be no walking trails or amenities or anything in front of him. He originally wanted us to convey the property to him, but we're paying the church for it and really couldn't give it to him. But I think we've reached an accord that's the best of all worlds with him having privacy and the security of knowing there's not going to be any activity in front of his house. The latest stip letter you have is March 11. The site plan that was submitted then has been updated. It's March 20. It reflects the lot data on there that the planning commission staff wanted to see. This is 56 homes, 1.9 units per acre. We have meaningly positioned, strategically meaningfully positioned open space. We exceed what's required under the OSC district. We also meet the parking regulations in terms of having the requisite number of guest parks for the site. During the planning commission hearing, Planning Commissioner Porter suggested that we could realign some of the parking or relocate it and disperse it to other parts of the subdivision. We're happy to do that. We haven't revised the site plan to show that because it's really a finite decision, and we think that, we agree with Mr. Porter, but we prefer to have the guidance of the fire marshal during the plan reprocess to tell us where exactly they want the additional guest parking spaces. We have the numbers, just the positioning that may be something that will be determined during the plan review process. I've given you a handout. It's got architectural renderings, elevations. These are the first time that you're seeing these. We submitted others with stipulation letters, but after we met with Commissioner Cupid last week, she suggested, after looking at Summerland Site, that she preferred this particular series of architectural renderings and elevations, realizing that what you're looking at, and I advise Commissioner Cupid of this, what you're looking at are homes that were built on larger lots than these OSC lots. But nevertheless, architecturally, dimensionally, we can incorporate that into our design. And of course, we've left it where the district commissioner has the final say-so as far as architectural renderings and elevations. I'm showing I have a full 10 minutes up here. I'm sure that's probably incorrect.
This is not your lucky day, Mr. President.
Okay, all right. With the history of this, we'll have ground-based monument-style signage on Holloman Road that will be incorporated in the landscape plan. This is going to be called Holloman Reserve. I told the planning commission and rightfully so, I've had this conversation with Murray Homan, who was the originator of this, and told him it would not be Murray Homan Reserve, it's going to be Holloman Reserve. He's gotten over the shock of that by now, I believe. The stip letter outlines the setbacks, and those are revised setbacks that comport with OSC. We are going to have, with respect to the open space, recitals on deeds which tell people before they ever buy this property that their property has contiguity to or backs up to open space. In addition to that, there'll be monumentation, ground-mounted monumentation on each lot. So there'll be a demarcation where folks will know where that open space is. We're putting the open space in conservation easement in perpetuity. It'll be maintained, as will all the other accoutrements of the subdivision, by the mandatory HOA. The open space, of course, is a part of the OSCE genre, if you will, in terms of protecting watershed and watersheds and environmentally sensitive ecosystems, which this is. Another thing that this is, interestingly, beautiful specimen trees, the stream going through, it's beautiful, the topo's nice and rolling, it's not necessarily gently rolling. But it's got a ton of infrastructure on it, pavilions, water slides, restrooms, and other components of a water park. I've run into an individual who's interested in having some of that for her own, but truth be told, demolition costs are going to be huge. The Cumberland Christian Academy, they were able to incorporate that into their plans, but we are not. So we're still determining exactly how much that's going to be, but it will exceed $200,000 just simply to remove the infrastructure that is there. We've agreed to the voluntary donation and conveyance of right-of-way so the county can achieve what they're looking for on Holloman Road. One thing that happened at the planning commission level that is huge in terms of this being a doable deal or not, or one that closes or doesn't, and that is the left-turn lane. I've handed out to you a traffic study done by Kimley Horn, I think it's dated December the 12th. We got that early and filed that with our original stipulation letter to show that a left-turning lane is, from a traffic perspective, is not required. I think your staff's rule of thumb, anytime there's over 30 homes, that they consider making that a part of any zoning. In this case, with that traffic study, it shows 90% of the traffic going in a northerly direction. It shows 32 cars per day. It shows, it's in front of you if you look at pages two and three. It's astounding what it doesn't show. What it doesn't show is any justification for a left-turn lane here. And Mr. Porter, as a part of his motion, said, "Well, it may not be required here, but I want to do it because growth's going to happen in this region because the way sewer is opening up with Powder Springs and Cobb County with the recent transaction between the two governmental entities." We've made it clear to Commissioner Cupid that the transaction can't happen with the cost and expense of $150,000 left-turn lane is not required. And Ashley White and DOT waived that, but I'm not sure if that was effectively communicated to the planning commission, by me, not by DOT. But we're asking that that not be included. And again, you have pages two and three of that traffic study that will show that. We're agreeable with all of staff's recommendations, and staff recommended approval at 59 lots when we were just a skosh over the 2.0, but we're now in compliance with VLDR. The Georgia Native Plant Society is going to do a plant rescue on this. The district commissioner, we set her up, so she will have the ability to make minor modifications to comport with your boilerplate language that you've got with that. So with all this being said, we do ask that you follow your staff's recommendation for approval, not at 59, but at 56 lots. And happy to respond to any questions. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Cupid, you may have. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sams, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I think we're a little generous with our time there, so I'll give the opposition 12 minutes. Those who oppose, please.
I can assure you, I do not need 12 minutes. Again, I'm Charles Spraybeer with the Cobb County School District. Appreciate your chairman voice and thank you for the time, Board of Commissioners. Approval of this petition, of this petition will cause concern for Cobb County School District as it will result in impact on enrollment of McKeechin High School, which is already over capacity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, as always.
Good morning. My name is Brent Green. I own the property at 5398 Holloman Road. I know you guys got the email that I sent you last week, and as has been discussed today, this actually began next month, it's been four years. And I'm just trying to get what was agreed upon four years ago. And on the advice of my commissioner, Mrs. Cupid, I met with Mr. Sams this morning, and I think we've worked out an agreement. But in a private meeting with Mrs. Cupid, a former owner, and Mr. Sams last month, I was educated to the fact that regardless of what's said in here, what's filmed, what's important and what's enforceable is what's on paper. So that's why I'd like to get that put into the record. I do have some concerns about the precedent set as far as the number of homes being put there, but I'll leave that to the wisdom of you guys. I'm concerned about the flooding, but again, I'll leave that to the experts and the engineers to decide because there's two streams that go through the property, and they both just happen to converge behind my home. And in the big flood of 2009, the water had come just up to my property line, so I was concerned about that. But the things, and even though Mr. Sams and I shook hands a few minutes ago on this, I'd just like to get into the record that what we agreed upon was that they would build an eight-foot chain-link privacy fence between the properties. And we had originally agreed four years ago that it would be done. We wanted it in 30 days. They wanted 90 days. We wanted 60 days. So we did it at 90 days, but it never got done. And even this January, the house was accessed, because I've got an eight-foot fence around every side except for the side where Cumberland Christian Academy's property is, and a gang, disciple, gangster killers, and it's been investigated by the Cobb County Gang Division, had access my property through that property over, there's two little small bridges across the stream. There's not that much property on that side, and I appreciate that they're not going to build on it. But what, but, so we had agreed upon that eight-foot chain-link privacy fence between the properties to be built within 90 days. We agreed that they would never build on that small amount of floodplain property on that side of the stream, on my side of the stream, and they would allow the floodplain property on my side of the stream to remain natural, just let the trees grow, which would ameliorate the noise pollution and the light pollution. Because the way the subdivision is, the roads are, every car that comes down through there, the lights are going to shine on the back of my house. The other, the fourth thing was, they would never have any activities or people on my side of the stream. And that was my concern this morning because in the planning and zoning, the last two meetings, at least the last meeting, they had decided they would put up the fence, but I still had concerns about people being over there. Well, Mr. Sams assured me this morning that they wouldn't have any people, activities, the same agreement we had made four years ago. And I'd just like that to be in written form so that can be enforced if need be. One addition to that is that I would appreciate, to be able to enforce that, I think that there's one cement bridge and there's one wooden bridge. I think those will be, need to be taken out to keep people from coming over to that side because, you know, it's kids, it's going to be a neighborhood of so many homes, and they're going to want to play out there in that floodplain area. Other than those four things, you know, I'll leave the rest up to you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak in opposition? Seem none? Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the applicant and Mr. Green for getting together to address some of the outstanding issues with this property. Mr. Green, before you sit down, I do want to ask you a question about the fence.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but in my notes I have here that a wooden privacy fence was to be erected. You're asking for a chain-link fence?
Yes, ma'am. It never was a wooden fence. We had talked about that four years ago, and we talked about it in the appeals and again this morning, that I prefer because a wooden fence is going to degrade over time and fall down. But a chain-link privacy fence, an eight-foot, would match the fences that I already have there, and with those slats in it, they just will last a lifetime, whereas the wooden fence wouldn't.
Well, I hope so because I have seen slats that do not last a lifetime, that also deteriorate, and I don't know the way that this is drafted, who will be maintaining that fence.
Right.
And retaining those slats because there is, there is a limited life on some of them that I've seen.
Right.
And I presume you want privacy, chain-link. Without the slats, it's a fence, but it doesn't necessarily lend itself to privacy.
Right.
Mr. Sams, may I ask you about the fence, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Will the HOA be maintaining that fence or is that Mr. Green's responsibility?
I would expect that Mr. Green would probably prefer that he maintain his side and we maintain ours, but yes, we'll maintain that.
You'll have another fence.
Sure. As far as slats, I'm, of course, visually, optically familiar with that. I don't know about the longevity of those type of fences and how, I'm kind of like you, I've seen the slats get bent and things like that, but yeah, we'll certainly erect it.
You'll work together on it. I just have some concerns.
Yes, ma'am. We're fine with every, within the timeframe and the type of fence and him selecting it and everything he said, we're agreeable to.
Okay. Thank you, Garvis.
Yes, ma'am.
Again, I appreciate all of you working together and appreciate the reduction in density so that it comports with future land use designation, a very low density of the density now being under two. I also appreciate that the applicant has agreed to not place trails adjacent to Mr. Green's property or any other type of amenity as you are concerned about activity and noise. Also, I have here the traffic study that was shared with me during a meeting with the applicant and wanted to discuss that with DOT.
Ashley White with the Department of Transportation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ms. Ashley, have you seen a copy of the Kimley Horn?
I have. We reviewed that, and we also ran our own numbers. So as a rule of thumb, anytime there's 30 lots or more, we generally ask for a left-turn lane, but sometimes we do consider the volume of traffic on the road. And if the traffic is low enough where we feel there will be gaps for left turners, we do make exceptions. So on Holloman Road, during the AM peak, there will be 37 vehicles of opposing traffic, maximum in a one-hour period, and at PM, 94 opposing vehicles. So with those numbers, we feel that any left turners will have significant gaps in traffic where they will be able to make those left-turn movements.
Okay.
And that was our reason for waiving the left turn.
So you're willing to waive that requirement?
We are.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I ask one other question, Commissioner? I noticed this was a recreation center at one time, so there clearly was a lot of volume of traffic coming out of there when it was used. So were there any, I know it's been a while, but were there any issues involving accidents or anything at that particular intersection of the exit or entrance to the, to the, to the park and the road?
We did not pull accident data. We were basically looking at that 30-lot threshold, and that was our first comment, just we saw more than 30 lots, so that was our recommendation at that time. And then we received a traffic memo, and we looked further into it to see how many trips were generated on Holloman Road. And then we received a traffic memo, and we looked further into it to see how many trips were generated on Holloman Road and...
I was just struck by the picture in the paper, I believe it was yesterday, of all the people that were at the park. So clearly, there was a lot, large volume. It was, it was intense. It was, you know, during certain times of the day. But I was just curious if there were any things that you can remember that some of the, on your staff would go back that far to say there were accidents at that particular intersection? But I'm fine with your comments.
Okay. Yeah, we didn't pull the crash data.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
I must say that I've heard about the water park and the day that my family and I were going to attend was, I think, the first day that it had closed. We came there and met the, met signs. And we've just heard a lot about how attractive of a designation this was. And I know there have been efforts to revive it. Cumberland Church came along and had chosen the spot to be a school, which seemed like a great transition. But considering their move to another site, it is good to see something occur here as the site has been languishing for some time. And my goal is just to get quality development at this site. I appreciate Summerland's consideration of the renderings from their website, and we'll work together to make sure that those elevations are are a strong step forward for this area. So with that, I move that we approve Z-5 subject to Planning Commission recommendations, except striking stipulation number four, which required the left-hand turn lane. Also ask that we approve it subject to the packet provided here today, acknowledging that District Commissioner will approve building architecture, which may or may not comport to the rendering submitted on the application letter dated 3/11, or those submitted today. But those are just provided general guide. But I'd also like to submit the Kimley Horn traffic study dated December 12, 2018, which provides data support for not needing the left-hand turn lane. Oh, thank you. Just want to emphasize in our stipulations that the applicant is to work with Brent Green. Just want to emphasize in the stipulations, the applicant's to work with Brent Green on the final fence to be erected, but District Commissioner having final review and approval. Also, guest parking is subject to District Commissioner approval. All other staff comments and recommendations to be included that are not otherwise in conflict.
Any discussion? Call to question. Passes five to zero with Commissioner Gamble in opposition. And with that, let's take a 10-minute break till 10:40.
Jesus.
Okay, we're back in session here. And John, I believe, give the floor back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Res zoning case Z 21 of 2019. Michael J. Tremblay requests rezoning from R 20 to R 15 for the purpose of single-family residential in landlot 755 and 758 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Elmwood Circle, north of Elmwood Drive. The applicant representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z 21? Let's direct show there's four people opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in. I get a show of people who are in support of rezoning case Z 21. Please raise your hand. Let's direct show the six people here in support. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Okay, Mr. Sams, we're going to give you legitimate 10 minutes this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. Good morning again. For the record, may it please the board. My name is Garvis Sams of the law firm of Sams, Lark and Huff in Bally, and I represent Michael Tremblay in connection with this application for rezoning. Mr. Tremblay is here with me today, as well as some of his neighbors. We have a petition that's appended to the handout that you have with 47 signatures on it. I have another signature that I just got this morning, so it's not before you, but since the deadline had passed for the submission of those. But we have an inordinate amount of support in the neighborhood, and what you're looking at is the subject property right now. This is a 1.89 acre tract, the largest tract in the subdivision, and there's a good reason for that. If I could get Cornelius to hand me the microphone. What I'd like to do is kind of walk you through a little bit of the positioning of this, and I'm not sure, is this what you're looking at? Yeah. This is the property that is outlined here in blue. Originally, it was purchased as a subdivision lot that was this lot here with the back part here. All this stripped down through here, as you can see with your GIS map, is own future commercial. Mr. Tremblay was able to purchase an additional piece of property to, I would say, square it out. I don't necessarily, didn't square it out, but it adds it, so it's 1.89 acres. And the proposal, and I'll get into in a minute, will show that what he's trying to do is add to his additional home here, two other homes, one home here and one home here. One of the original components of our application sought a concurrent variance, waiving public road frontage. But if you look at the revised site plan that I'm going to show you in a minute, we were able to take care of that by adding additional property. We filed this revised site plan that you're looking at now last Wednesday, and then met with the commissioner on the following Friday. It looks like a lot going on, because it is, not by virtue of design, Mr. Tremblay, but there's an existing stream that traverses the property here. Again, you see the CF is all on the back here, future commercial. So you've got the stream, you've got the Georgia power easement here, and then there's a Colonial Pipeline easement as well. So it's stream traversed, it's easement traversed, it's burdened by unusable zoning classification. Other than that, it's perfectly natural lot, but it has topo as well. What we've done since the last meeting is we've added this piece here. And Mrs. Drummond, Ms. Tiffany Drummond is here. I'm going to give, I'd like for her to have some time to speak. She and her husband have put this under contract to Mr. Tremblay. What that does is give us the requisite amount of road frontage, so we don't have to waive any road frontage in order to get the three homes back here. And I might add that these three homes added to this go up to a total impervious percentage of 15%, which is way below the R 15, which we have requested more than half. Again, is low. Also, it's not shown on here, but the density we have with three homes on 1.8, excuse me, it's now 1.92 acres, is a density of 1.58 units per acre. That's significant in that the property is within an area that's denominated as MDR, medium-density residential, which allows densities ranging from 2.5 to 5 units per acre. So we're very much well below that. Also, we are below the densities of very-low density, which is low density is 1, excuse me, 1 to 2.5. And then, of course, you have VLD, which is 0 to 2. So we're at the mid-range of VLDR on a piece of property that is owned CF and R 20. The MDR configuration of this property was imposed as policy by the board with a future land use map change in 2001. I've got the minutes here that reflect that. That is the policy of the board. As you can see by looking at your GIS map, we are surrounded by other properties on CF, properties on heavy industrial, and also properties that are zoned RM8, which has contingency to our west. On this that Cornelius has put up here, if I can just show you a little bit about what we've got. This is our lot right here, the entirety of that. These two pieces purchased at different times, but to form the 1.92 acres. As you can see, precedent has been used by some of the very few neighbors that are in opposition to this regarding, well, this will set a precedent, and everyone will be coming and asking for more lots. Well, if you look at these lots, and this is like all the lots on this side of Elmwood, you can see this line right here, that's the future commercial line. We have over 200 feet of frontage. There's no other lot here which exceeds 109 feet of frontage. So we're literally the only, it's the only lot within the subdivision that can be done to. If you look at the signatures of support, you'll see they're all on Elmwood. If you look at the letters that are attached to that, one of the letters is from Ms. Drummond, who is here today. "We have staff's recommendation for approval under the original configuration, which asked for the waiver of road frontage, but we were able to jettison that. That really was the sole crux upon which the opposition rested its case. We have an interior variance on a lot too, in terms of the setback for the house itself, but that's interior to the development. And certainly, with this hardship-laden piece of property, you understand it's actually a poster child for hardship set of circumstances." The usual steps that you see in terms of the fire marshals wanting two-car garages with two additional cars in the driveway, we've got that. We have houses that will range from 3,000 square feet up to 4,000 square feet. We also have stipulations and conditions regarding architecture. What you saw in the last one was Summerlin Homes, very similar here. Although Mr. Tremblay is not a developer, he hasn't gone to the cost of providing you with architectural renderings and elevations, but there'll be 50% brick or stone on the front, and the architecture will be subject to the district commissioner's review and approval. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Tiffany Drummond. She and her family have lived in this subdivision, which was platted in 1959. They have lived there for 60 years, and she carries on that tradition. And she is also, would like to speak, so Ms. Drum.
And Ms. Drummond, do you have two minutes?
Okay, good morning. My name's Tiffany Drummond. I am in the property directly adjacent to Michael Tremblay's property. My grandparents, Rufus and Elnora Jacobs, purchased it from the builder in 1963, and after they passed, my father purchased it until my ex-husband and I were able to purchase it from him in 2006. And I am in full support of the rezoning of Mr. Tremblay's property. While my grandparents were there, they saw the creation and inception of I-285. They gave the easement to the Georgia power lines that were over their garden. And in addition to that, with the changing of the neighborhood itself, one of the houses on Elmwood Drive burned down and was rebuilt in a completely different style, with a flat roof, very modern, in, I believe it was the late 60s or early 70s. And I guess the one thing that I have learned while living there, and from knowing my grandparents and their personal beliefs, is that they taught me a love for tradition, but understanding the need for progress. And I'm excited about increasing home values in our neighborhood, and I feel like these new homes would only increase the value of the neighborhood and add to the beauty and, you know, the new neighbors that we have around us. And there's a lot of transition already happening right now with houses being flipped and gutted, and bricks being taken off fronts, and second stories going up, and things like that. And I just think it's really great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. To close, we'd just like to respect the request that you follow your staff's recommendation for approval on this as presented today and at the appropriate time. Mr. Tremblay is here, as well as some of his neighbors. We can respond to any questions. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cupid, do you have? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sams. Okay, those in opposition?
Chairman, boys, commissioners, good morning. My name is Steve Shepherd. I live at 2312 Elmwood Circle. Let me quickly say that I rented a house in Forest Acres in 2013. I had a lot under contract on Woodland Brook and plans drawn, and was going to build a home there too. I've lived in Buckhead for about 30 years. Because I fell in love with Forest Acres, the affordability, the inside 285, the Cobb County, I decided that it was a smart economic move for me to stay there. One of the things that's endearing about Forest Acres is the well-laid-out neighborhood, consistency of frontage, of setback, of rolling wooded hills. If any of you have not driven through there, I would encourage you to do so. It's a little hidden gem pocket. If you go down South Cobb inside 285, you've got industrial, 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 and then 285. And in the middle of all that is a little entrance to, one entrance to a neighborhood. We enjoy a secure, we don't have a big crime issue or anything. When I was in the city of Atlanta, Mayor Norwood named me to a land use committee. And I had a lot to do with the design and development, not from the drawing standpoint, but from a legality standpoint of setting up the precedent for the new public shopping center where Moore's Mill enters, hits Bolton, and between there and Marion of the Lord. Then Shirley Franklin, who was mayor at the time, named me to a infield development task force, because as a builder, I was pretty sensitive to consistency and character of neighborhood in building in what were being called the McMansions at that time. So that being said, Mr. Sams wants to talk about what's going on on Riverview and the zoning potential and different commercial and whatever. But the truth of the matter is, is we see with that future commercial designation behind the seven, in addition to Mr. Tremblay's, that that's not coming to pass. So there's a lot of transition going on along there, but as a resident of Forest Acres, I'd like to see consistency maintained. The big issue is not the frontage, the big issue is the flag lot. There's not another flag lot in our neighborhood. To introduce something like that is going to potentially alter the character of our neighborhood and not to the positive. So I'd ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name's Josh Petrie, and I've lived in the Forest Acres for five years. I'm also a real estate agent. I have, in my career, sold 50 million in sales volume and over 300 homes. And 16 of those transactions have been within our neighborhood. I want to speak on behalf of just a few things. First, about the petition that went around and how we've had 50-something signatures. I got a little map of the neighborhood I want to show. I appreciate how many signatures they have, but as you can see here, the red is the signatures that they have collected based on what they turned in last week, which was made public. The blue marks on there are invalid signatures. They're not homeowners and/or wish they could take back their signature. There are, as you can see, the amount of green. There are more than half of the neighborhood who does not agree with this. So I just want to make that very clear. I also have questions of concerns about the flag lot as well. Selling real estate in the metro Atlanta area for 70 years and doing so much volume, I have shown lots of flag lots. My clients, and based on my experience, they're less desirable. Once a property is less desirable, it sits on the market longer. Once it sits on the market longer, prices are reduced, and then it's considered a comp for our neighborhood. I don't think this is going to help our neighborhood. I appreciate them doing the road frontage, but I also have questions about that. Ms. Drummond's property seems to be under a warranty deed to separate part of the property. In paragraph 18 of the warranty deed, it says it has to go at that point in front of the mortgage company. And the mortgage company then has to give written acceptance of that. This is not something that takes, this is something that takes a long time, and I question that. And I haven't seen that yet. So as a neighbor, as a professional in the real estate market, I do not think this is going to bring value to our neighborhood, and I oppose it.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, good morning. Thank you for hearing us today. My name's David Weiss, and I've been a property owner in Forest Acres for over 23 years. I'm here to represent the opinion of several of the neighbors that I've heard from in opposition to the plan. The main concern is not necessarily rezoning of the commercial, future commercial to R 20, it's the variances that they're requesting for setbacks that could set dangerous precedents for the neighborhood. Mr. Sams indicated that there were no other lots in the neighborhood that could support that, which is incorrect. There are several others not contiguous to the property in question, but in other parts of the neighborhood that could support flag lots just like this. I'd like to read a few comments from some of the neighbors that I've received via personal and email, that the green space, reasons why they like our neighborhood the way it is. "The green space and established wooded areas are beautiful in our neighborhood. Changing that would alter the character of the neighborhood. We do not want to increase the density in our neighborhood. Traffic getting in and out of the neighborhood is already bad. Adding additional homes in the neighborhood would adversely affect that as well. The removal of the trees in both of those spots where they would have planned to build a house would increase the road noise from 285. We love the quaint and historical character of our neighborhood, and we love our lot, large lot sizes, and appreciate that we're not close to our existing neighbors." So for these reasons, we agree with the zoning board's recommendation to allow the rezoning of the future commercial area to R 20 with no variances. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Thomas Crainy. I live at 2325 Elmwood Drive. And this particular development would impact me, because I would have a direct line of sight to this development from my back, by my backyard, my back deck. I don't want to be too redundant. I certainly stand by my other neighbors and everything that they've said. You know, and my primary concern is the impact to the value of our neighborhood, but also, you know, maintaining the integrity of consistency. I would very much not like to see two very large driveways replacing the natural environment that's currently there. And yeah, that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Commissioner Cupid. Sorry. Perfect timing.
Thank you, Chairman. I've had the opportunity to speak to the applicant and those in opposition, and shared with them my observations. And today, I'm inclined to support the decision of the planning commission. This is a neighborhood that I have been in multiple times, and it is a very well-kept community that is older. But you could tell the residents take a lot of pride in their property, and as evidenced in the increase of value of the homes that have been there. My decision today is consistent with decisions that I've made on this board in the past, when we've had cases come before us to add additional homes to the rear of a property. I have supported them where they've already been existing, and there's just a cleanup of zoning. But it's very difficult to add that when there's a neighborhood that already has a certain form or character. And here, to add a rear lot where the CF, or where there's future commercial, would not be consistent with anything that I've seen here in this neighborhood, and just would result in a home having awkward views compared to those of the rest of the neighborhood. I'm not in real estate to know the resale value, but it's, you know, and there have been, you know, discussions about tiny houses or in-law homes, but there have had no discussion about this being used for housing anyone in the residence that fronts Elmwood Circle that could potentially sold off, be sold off and just be three distinct, single-family homes. That would probably be the only reason of which I would consider it, which again, has not been brought to my attention. But just looking at the neighborhood, short of any past or personalities, is something that I cannot support, that third lot. The second one I can. The second lot was going to have variances, because it did not have the requisite frontage, and I believe the addition of the, I'm sorry, the adjacent property owners' property will add adequate frontage to not acquire variance. But I know this is an awkward property, because there are two power lines that run through it. So I am supportive of a different, of another home, or a second home, that would front Elmwood Circle on the more triangular lot. However, I'm not in support of the third home on the future commercial. So with that, I'd ask that we approve the planning commission's recommendation to delete Z 21 to the R 20 zoning district, subject to the conditions that were placed upon it, and also subject to any staff recommendations that are not otherwise in conflict.
Do we have a second?
Second, and a question.
Go ahead.
Will that take care of the road frontage variances and so forth?
The purchase of the adjacent property would take care of the frontage on that southern parcel that's adjacent to Elmwood Circle. Yep, so this is subject to that. And I am not opposed to permitting, you know, I'm not opposed to permitting a variance for that not to go through, as that's been questioned. I don't think that, it is unreasonable to develop a lot on that southern lot on Elmwood Circle. So I am willing, matter of fact, I'll add a condition, that I'm willing to waive the frontage variance on that southern lot if the applicant is unable to acquire the parcel from the neighbor that's south of their property. A number.
Maximum is two lots?
Yes, there is a, that's a condition, is a maximum of two.
What I was referring to is the variance with the road frontage, because I don't think it should just be anything. I mean, I think there should be a minimum.
The minimum is what's stated on the handout and in the presentation. I believe it was 92 feet. So it is not to be reduced.
Below 92? Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. And I just have one question for Mr. Shepherd. I need you to come, yeah. Make sure we get you here on the film, on the, so everybody can see at home. I saw a number of messaged letters from people that supported your issues about the variances. Would this address, would this motion as presented, address those concerns?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, all I need to know.
All right.
Any other questions? Call question. Call a question. Passes five to zero. Hey, John, we're on to other business.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. For the record, my name is John Peterson. I am the zoning division manager for Cobb County. First item on today's other business agenda is to consider item number 15, which is to consider a reduction of minimum public road frontage from 75 feet to zero feet for Lot 10 for Beverly, for Beverly Elm McEvie, for property located on the west side of Tarpley Road, south of Tarpley Place, Land Lot 279 of 20th District. By way of background, the Board of Commissioners considers all reductions to minimum public road frontage pursuant to a code amendment to Section 134, 271, 7A, adopted on February 27, 2018. The subject property is zoned to R20, which requires 75 feet of public road frontage. Proposed lot number 10 contains 8.3 acres and is proposed to have zero feet of public road frontage. In 2016, the Board of Commissioners approved an OSC application that would have allowed 12 lots on its property. The applicant has decided the property would be better utilized for only one estate-sized lot instead of 12 lots. The applicant would need a variance on the existing approximately 6,400 square-foot shed, storage building, due to its location, which is 30 feet to the north property line and 38 feet to the west property line. The storage building has been there for a number of years, for decades, in fact, and is used to store equipment to take care of the property. The staff would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed reduction of public road frontage. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business number 15? Let the director show us no one opposed. You want to make a presentation, Larry? No? Okay. The applicant is here, if you have any questions.
It's the staff's recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request, subject to the access to Lot 10, be located out of the 100-year floodplain, subject to allowance of the existing storage building as shown on the site plan received March 12, 2019, subject to the store-walled management comments contained in the other business item, subject to the water and sewer comments contained in the other business item, and subject to the Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business item.
Commissioner Gabriel.
And John, if we could just add the stipulation that the final easement location to be approved by the district commissioner.
Okay.
Your motion.
And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve OB 15.
Second.
Second, in discussion. Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
OB 21, I believe.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and Board, is to consider other business item number 21 of 2019, which is to consider a site plan and stipulation amendment for Branch Acquisition Company, LLC, regarding rezoning case Z64, 2017. The property is located on the east side of Oakdale Road and on the south side of West Atlanta Road and Land Lot 693 of the 17th District. By way of background, the subject property was rezoned PVC in 2017 as part of a 15 parcel addition to the mixed-use development known as West Village. As part of the approval, the applicant was permitted to build a combination of 48 single-family houses and townhouses on the property. During the review process, one of the tracks that was rezoned to PVC was inadvertently left off the site plan, causing a four-lot loss for the developer. This other business item only seeks to have the Board of Commissioners approve the site plan with 48 lots, which should have been included in the 2017 zoning action. If approved, all other conditions should remain in effect. The staff would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing and consider the proposed site plan stipulation amendment. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to this item? The director show, there's one person opposed. The staff would ask the board to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed site plan stipulation amendment.
Mr. Moore? Okay, Mr. Moore, I think the board, since this is a previous zoning, just go over the highlights of the case and then what the issue is here. I think that would be very helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Kevin Moore here on behalf of Branch Properties. Mr. Peterson did a good job. This property, 13.702 acres, was rezoned PVC at the end of 2017. You see that on your screen. And you'll also see the site plan that was part of that rezoning and is included within the minutes of approval of that rezoning in 2017. What that, this is again, was as part of the West Village development. It's kind of generally known as Phase 3. If I can step over there, I'll show you this and highlight that issue for you.
Sure.
This was a site plan, 13.702 acres. It contained within it, bless you. It contained within it 40 townhomes. And then it also showed eight single-family homes fronting here along Oakdale in this location, and then 40 townhomes. That was what was approved in 2017. Also, as part of that rezoning application submittal, it was an assemblage. And let me show you the site plan now. Because it'll make more sense. Site plan now, you'll see this parcel here. In the application that was approved in December of 2017, it included that property in terms of its legal description, in terms of the owner's signatures, in terms of the vesting deeds for that parcel. It included that parcel in the application for rezoning. It's just that in the site plan, it didn't have it on the site plan. It was a mistake that was made at that time. So that property stands as rezoned in that December action to PVC. And so therefore, it's been rezoned and carries with it that zoning category. What we're now showing is, in fact, that parcel included in the site plan. But we are not increasing the number of units or homes that were approved. This property, in fact, stays 13.702 acres. It's the property that was rezoned, just not shown on that site plan. It just now, we have a total of 39 townhomes and nine single-family homes on this site plan. So we have the same number, 48, as before. It's not changing, it's not increasing. Same acreage, same property, just more, it's now accurately reflected on the site plan. So in meeting with staff, it was staff's opinion and our opinion that submittal for other businesses is appropriate as a site plan amendment so that it can be properly shown on the site plan. That's the issue that's before you today. Otherwise, there's no other changes. It remains subject to all the stipulations that were approved at that time because it was zoned and approved at that time for this. So a little bit harder to explain than it, but it's rather a simple request that we're making, that is simply to request that the site plan accurately reflect what was zoned without increasing the density.
We have any questions? We're happy to answer that, and we request your approval of this other business item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Rose Barnes, speaking for Cobb County Civic Coalition and Oakdale Community Association Board. CCCC and OCA strongly object to this outrageous attempt to rezone a piece of property from R20 to PVC under the other business agenda. Other business items are, by requirements, have to be minor. This is not minors. It should have been a rezoning application. The property is now still R20 as the applicant admittedly failed to include in the site plan for the adjacent 64 application from 2017. The application included reference to the site plan, which was incorrect. Nor was it in the site plan approved by Commissioner Ott in April 2008. According to this application, the property was intended to be included in 2000, in Z64. However, zoning application should not be a litany of intentions but legally binding contracts, and remedy should only occur under prescribed procedure. Applicant is requesting that it become, and I quote, "an additional part of the zoning, of the final rezoning." An additional part. In other words, a separate rezoning of this parcel without a zoning reaplication. This approval is intent to do an end around to the zoning code to abnegate the applicant's blunder and to allow for four more condos to be built without due process. Obviously, the OB process is less costly, less complicated, and much less time-consuming than the prescribed full rezoning process. And therefore, approval under OB would be of great advantage to the applicant. However, decision under the OB system would deprive the public of review by the planning commission and full staff comments requisites of rezoning applications in the process set a dangerous precedent for future development. Developers routinely add adjacent properties to their projects. Approval of this item would give them the green light to use the OB system to facilitate adjacent development. Adding to the glaring irregularities in this process, misrepresentation of the site itself. It reads, this application is to be a stipulation amendment. Didn't say site plan, it said stipulation amendment. This property was not included in the original site plan, representing the Z64 application. It was never subject to any stipulations. The signage is therefore another misrepresentation, misrepresentation to the public. If the sign were accurate, it would state that the application is for rezoning from R20 to PVC. In other words, it would be a rezoning application, complete with a Z number, not an OB number. The only remedy this application should be allowed is the opportunity to apply for a rezoning application. Egregious mistakes occur, but lack of diligence should not be rewarded, especially at the expense of the due process and public rights. OCA Board and TCC respectfully request that you deny this application. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Mr. Uh... I'm sorry. John, staff's recommendations. I apologize, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman and Board, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request, subject to the revised site plan received by zoning on April 3, 2019, with the district commissioner approving minor changes, subject to store-walled management comments contained in the other business item, subject to Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business item, and subject to all previous conditions not in conflict.
Mr. Ott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me explain to the board why we're here. Not because it was cheaper to file another business application. We're here because I told the applicant that I wanted it to be another business item because staff told me that I could have just signed it off on the modified site plan because in the original zoning, this was all discussed. The description of the property included this, the number of units included this. It was a mistake. It's a scribbler's error. It just happened to be made by the applicant. But in the interest of trying to be totally transparent with the public, I told them that I wanted them to file another business application. So it has nothing to do with cost or anything like that. It was just my, my attempt to make sure that what was happening there, because I didn't want to be accused by the public of adding lots. But these lots are on there. It was discussed initially, and so that's, that's how we got here. So my motion is to approve other business item 21 per staff comments or recommendations. All previously approved stipulations and conditions to remain in effect.
Second, and one question.
Okay.
The entire site was PVC.
Right.
And the original 2017's item correct. So there's no R20 left.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, this, this all comes down to the fact that the picture that showed what was being zoned back in 2017 didn't match what was approved. That's really what it comes down to, is that the drawing didn't match. And so literally, what we're doing is approving, instead of me just signing off on the site plan because the stipulations had the district commissioner approve modification of the site plan, I just decided that it made, it was better to do it as another business item. But that's all that's happening is that a new site plan is being submitted that accurately shows what was approved in 2017. But Commissioner Burrell, you're correct, it was zoned PVC.
The whole site. Just clarifying question, Chairman. Clarifying question. Commissioner, was the entire site brought in for zoning and reviewed by the public, and it just missed the four lots?
Well, all the discussion, the description, the number of lots, they were all included. It just, the site plan did not include them on there. The drawing was incorrect.
Okay.
And so, because this site plan, as was mentioned by Ms. Barnes, I signed off on a modification of the site plan because some of the townhomes were moved and reconfigured, and it was left off there. And it wasn't until, I think they actually started counting when they were going to sell the pads, that the error was detected. And I just thought it made more sense, or it was better to do it publicly.
So could you just put up, I mean, I'm looking at my notes here. I see a site plan approved on December 19 by the board. I just want to make sure that what I'm seeing here is the actual site plan that was approved. Could you put that up? Not what we're trying to go to, but where we were, what was approved on December 19, 2017. Okay, yeah, I just, I want to make sure that my notes match because I got several site plans here. So this is the one that was approved in December of 2017, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I just make sure I'm counting. So there were eight houses along there, is there nine lots there along Oakdale?
That's right.
Is there eight or nine? I just can't.
There's eight.
There's eight there.
Okay. And then there were six townhomes.
Correct.
Right. Now, Kevin, put up the, just so we can show the chairman.
Right.
Because the next site plan that I was given, reconcorde, arranged the townhomes.
Okay. And when was that one given to you, Commissioner Ott? I'm just trying to get my chronology here.
Actually, that's this one here.
There's one that was approved on April 9, 2018, okay?
Right.
So that's the next one. And it still basically reflects what was approved in 2017, right?
Correct.
And we're just trying to modify that to reflect what, the additional home and the additional town. There'd be less townhomes if there were one additional residence.
Right. Because if you look at the, if you look at this one, which has my signature on the side.
Okay.
What changed was, the original one had three and three townhomes up at the top part there.
Right, right.
The modified one had four and four.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And then the ones that were horizontally on your page there in the middle went away. And there was the second string put down along the side there.
Gotcha. All right.
So even that one, they hadn't caught that there was an error.
And I think the real question here is that even with the, with the new site plan, it doesn't change the underlying zoning that we approved.
Well, don't change underlying zoning and the number of units that were previously approved all the way back in 17.
Well, there's an asset that the minutes, the zoning specifically says eight residences and 40 townhomes. That's what we approved in 2017. So we're actually modifying that to one more residence.
That's correct.
Right, okay. That's all I'm saying. The total numbers are the same.
Right.
We've just gone one more residence and one less townhome.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'll call a question. Passes five to zero. And the last one?
Your last item today, Mr. Chairman and Board, is to consider something, or to amend something, something previously adopted. Section 25 of the Board of Commissioners zoning and land use hearing procedures adopted January 11, 1994. The last revised October 19, 2004, allows any commissioner to amend an action taken at a previous hearing. A second shall be required, and full discussion shall be allowed. A majority vote shall be required for adoption of the amendment. If passed, a second motion will be needed to revise the conditions. This particular item would be to amend stipulations for rezoning case Z67 of 2018, as listed in the official minutes of the February 19, 2019 meeting. The stipulation that needs to be amended to perfect the record is to add the letter of stipulations from Ms. Tracy Brown dated February 14, 2019. Staff would ask the board to consider this amendment to the previous action.
Commissioner Burrell?
Yes. When this was approved, the neighbor and applicant had an additional...
When this was approved, the neighbor and applicant had an additional step regarding the fence, and they're all agreeable with it, so we just need to include the letter from Tracy Brown on February fourteenth of two thousand and nineteen in the original zoning for Z-sixty-seven.
Okay, so if you'll make a motion, we'll act on it.
Motion to approve.
Second. A second? Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero, and we're adjourned.